Please stand for the flag salute. Thank you. Please pull the roll.
Barry?
Here.
Mr. Carrage?
Here.
Mr. Luke D'Amiano?
Here.
Mr. Cattaldo?
Here.
Mayor D'Amiano?
Yeah.
Councilman Scobah?
Mr. Seaver?
Here.
Derek D'Amiano?
Mr. Potion?
Dr. Abdi?
Mr. Wade?
Mr. Colbler?
Yep.
Mr. Colbler?
Here.
Ms. Shabon?
Here.
Mr. Kilpatrick?
Here. Please read the statement of public notice.
Little Falls Township Planning Board Meeting of Thursday, December 7, 2023 is called to order. Please take notice that adequate notice of this meeting was provided in accordance with NJSA 10:4-8 and NJSA 10:4-10 as follows. Notice of the meeting was promptly posted on the bulletin board at the municipal building located at 225 Main Street, Little Falls, New Jersey on March 3, 2023. A copy of the notice was sent via email to the North Jersey Herald and News and filed with the Office of the Township Clerk on said date. Please note that this meeting is being taped, therefore we ask that you speak loud and clear into the microphones.
Thank you. Council President Scobah, do you have any comments for us?
Chairman, there was no one that came before the council at our last council meeting concerning anything with this planning board.
Thank you. We did not have a meeting in November due to the fact there were no applications. Can I have a motion for the approval of minutes of October 5, 2023?
I'll make the motion.
May I have it? Valerie?
Mr. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Carrage?
Yes.
Mr. Luke D'Amiano?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Dr. Abdi?
Mr. Kilpatrick?
Yes. Um, applications. Long Hill Legal?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council President, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, John Vetery entering my appearance on behalf of Long Hill Legal LLC. I'm the attorney for Long Hill Legal, but this is a joint application this evening with the township of Little Falls. We have properly noticed along with the township in the Herald and News as well as submitted all of the required 200-foot notices to the neighbors and the public utilities.
Chairman, I've had an opportunity to review the notice. Notice complies with requirements of the municipal land, so the board has just, the board does have jurisdiction of its application.
Thank you very much. Mr. Vetery, are you also representing the town?
I am not. I'm not representing town, but I'm here representing the application and the township has been privy to all of the documents, application and have worked together with Joe Wenzel with respect to the application and just decided it's bad enough to have to hear one attorney rather than to have to hear two, and it's the same app, it's the same application.
Thank you. Proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I took the opportunity to go back to 1909 in my attachment. I don't know if you read it or not, but we really only have to go back to 2019. But this has been a more than a century old problem, and I give quite a bit of credit to the mayor for taking this on. It's the last dirt road here in the township. It's been complained about. They never had sewers, never had drainage, never had, you know, any kind of improvements. And this Hemlock Road, the southern portion of Hemlock Road, operated by this little 10-foot wide easement that ran with the property that was given from, you know, one of the, I guess, the oldest house at the end of the southern portion of Hemlock. Back in the late 70s, the property was sold to the church, took them a long time to get the property built, and still nothing was ever done. There was some talk at that time to tie the, to tie the road into the traffic light. Back in the 80s, the neighbors objected, they didn't want that. And then most recently, when the mayor and council met with everyone and a decision was made that it would be best just to create a cul-de-sac. So in 2019, the township came before this board and received approval to subdivide off and create a about 16,000 square foot lot, which is the 35 feet by 200 and something, which was essentially Hemlock Road, not the right of way, but what was needed to create Hemlock Road. After that, I came before this board with an application in 2021. And if you recall, that was the application where we did a lot line adjustment between lots six and seven. So the historic Holland House, we did a very slight lot line adjustment, I think less than five feet. And then it left us with this lot six. And the board at that time asked us and made way to put it into the resolution, I think it was clause five, that the lot could not be built on until we came back to this board and used our best efforts, good faith attempt, to try to acquire additional land once the time comes, if the time comes, that the town vacates Hemlock. So that application got approved, but there was a pretty big contingency in that application. So the applicant really couldn't do anything without trying to go through this process. Okay, so fast forward, now we're into 2022. Joe Wenzel came back before this board, the board approved an application to sever the southernmost portion. It was about 6,000 square feet of that newly created lot of Hemlock Road so that this potential for a cul-de-sac could happen. The, we have with us tonight Frank Kupinski from Boswell. Boswell designed the cul-de-sac. The original cul-de-sac was a little too small to allow for adequate turnaround. Anyone wants to look at it, it's, it's built, it's beautiful, looks terrific and works very well. The application here tonight is to really finalize the portion of the lot so that the cul-de-sac can exist and that property will get, the portion of my client's property on lot six will get swapped with the township. The township and the applicant, Long Hill Legal, entered into a land swap contract. And then lot six can finally augment some additional land. It's not as much as we anticipated because the original anticipation was that there'd be a tie-in at the traffic light and that they would obtain a lot more land. So it's only an exchange of about 600 and something square feet. But the, you know, we were charged with getting as much land as possible as a result of the vacation of the property and however the township determined to satisfy the needs of the town, the needs of the residents in that area by way of creating this cul-de-sac. And like I said, I think it came out great. So, so we're left with the lot line adjustment and subdivision tonight, and it, it still leaves lot 6.01 deficient. In the 2021 application, the lot area previously was somewhere around 8,700, I think 8,789. The, the new lot is now 9,355 square feet, not that much bigger, and it is still deficient in size. So it's 15,000 in the R1A zone and we have 9,355. There've been substantial improvements with respect to the lot width. The lot width was formerly about 50, I think it was about 52 feet. I don't see it here, but it was around that, 52 feet. And now we have 86.11 feet, whereas 100 feet is required. So that's a substantial improvement as well. So the, the application tonight involves this subdivision. I'd like to bring up the, the surveyor who worked on this from Boswell, Frank Kupinski, and have him sworn in, and then he could explain, answer any questions, and then we'll take it to the next step. Right?
Good evening, everyone.
Please raise your right hand, you swear or from the testimony that you're about giving before this board is going to be the truth of the whole truth.
I do.
For the record, just tell us your name, display your last name.
Frank Kupinski, K-R-U-P-I-N-S-K-I.
Frank, if you would, give the more than benefit of your education with professional experience.
Uh, yes, I've been serving since 1983. I started, I've been at Boswell 25 years, got my license in 1992, I believe it was now. So I've been serving for four years.
Is that in good standing?
Yes, it is.
I offer Frank as an expert in the area of certain.
Accepted.
Thank you, Chairman. Frank, if you would, just give an overview of subdivision this evening and lot line adjustment. If you have any questions with the board and board profession.
Yes, John did a very good job explaining what the, the history of it and.
I wanted more, but I sense that working.
The cul-de-sac made sense because I think originally they wanted to have Hemlock connect to Long Hill Road and, you know, over time, this was the better solution. So, um, yes, I think it's a swap of 566 square feet between the two lots. And so now we have a cul-de-sac lot and a buildable lot.
And the plans you have here are what has been submitted, so we have to mark them. And was one issue with respect to the scale that you directed on the plans?
Yes, we originally had it on a, for a minor subdivision purposes, so it was a 10 scale. We made the sheet double sized, but never changed the scale.
So it's. This is so small that this would be a minor, but because it involved the extension of this same road, you know, on the code, it's got to be major and be perfected by way of.
Any questions to the board? May I have a motion to open up the meeting to the public?
So move.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Any member of the public which wishes to come up and address us, please do so at this time? No one coming forward, I close the meeting to the public?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I did have one question, uh, which I can ask, Mr. Vetery. Cul-de-sac was not the first plan. Uh, the first plan that has, was to have a through street. How did you arrive or how did the town arrive with the cul-de-sac concept?
I think I, we can let, uh, maybe, uh, Council President Scobah or the mayor speak to that. I think there was a lot of input from the community and that that's how they arrived that the cul-de-sac was the best idea for fear that, the same fear they had in the 80s, I believe, that they didn't want people driving through their neighborhood and using it as a cut through to get the lower notch, I think survived up until this time.
Very good. Thank you. I don't need to hear from anyone else. Uh, engineering report was addressed?
Yes.
I did think that the engineer's wording, "Application is essentially a final step of prior approvals in able the development improvement of Hemlock Road." Covers it all. Very nice, Mike. Let's see if you're paying attention. Um, all right. Any questions to the board? You're complete?
Yeah, no long summer here. It's been a century old problem, finally getting corrected. Give a lot of credit to everyone for moving this forward. And then the last step would be whenever the time comes for an application to be filed for an actual site plan for this lot, then that would be, yeah, that would be filed at that time. But once the map is filed, the lot will be perfected and this portion of it will be complete and we can no longer slice and dice this lot. I think we're done. Thank you.
Are there any variances required, minimum lot area and?
Yes, there are two variances, one for lot area of 9,355, whereas 15,000 square feet is required. And the other for lot width of 86.11 feet, whereas 100 is required in the R1A zone.
I thought we might address that. Thank you. Does our engineer have any comments?
Will deeds be filed for the first of the lot?
For the?
To lot creation.
So the, it will, it will be done by map? Yeah, it'll be done by a map filing and then whenever, when the property is conveyed out, so when we convey our portion of the township and the township conveys their portion of us, then we'll have legal descriptions for those and then there will be deeds there and we'll submit them to both of you for review. Yeah. Yep, sure. So basically we're doing it both ways. We're, it'll be done by map, so it'll show up on the, you know, county map. And then we'll also do it by deed once the properties are swapped. Sure.
Any other question, further questions for Mr. Vetery? Counselor, do you have any comments?
Chairman, based on the history of this project that the board is well aware of, I've taken the liberty of preparing a resolution that reflects the nature of the hearing and the belief saw. So if the board is so inclined, we can do two things tonight. We can approve the application and also adopt the resolution simultaneously.
Uh, are those two, two votes?
No, one vote.
Very good. So the vote will, the recommendation for approval will be what? The two, uh, the bulk variance?
Preliminary, 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 final subdivision approval and the two variances for lot 6.02.
May I have a motion?
So move.
May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Please poll the board.
Mr. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Carrage?
Yes.
Mr. Luke D'Amiano?
Yes.
Ms. Cattaldo?
Yes.
Mayor D'Amiano? Councilman Scobah?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Dr. Abdi? Mr. Kilpatrick?
Chairman votes yes, the application and the resolution are approved.
Thanks, thanks very much, and thanks for doing the resolution in advance as well. That was helpful. Thank you.
Have a good holiday, Mr. Vetery.
Chairman, I have a suspicion that we're not through with Mr. Vetery.
Well, I thought perhaps you could turn around and turn back.
Hey, nice seeing everyone.
Good to see everyone.
All right.
Next application is for Six Cousins LLC.
Okay, entering my appearance on this application, John Vetery, Three University Plaza, Hackensack, New Jersey. On behalf of Six Cousins LLC, the owner of Five Mueller Place, block 57, lots 12, 13, 14, and 15. So for this, we're only going back to 1959. So a single family was, a home was built here in, in 1959. It operated as a single family for a while, did operate as a, for a portion as a two-family home. I don't know whether that was legal or not when Ronnie Cordero lived there, uh, and that was probably in the early 2000s. Um, I believe in looking at this, the property's been vacant since 2011. I don't know if it was connected to Hurricane Irene maybe in the basement or, or what the, what the situation was, but I remember having a client look at it, um, you know, right around that time when it was vacant and I, some, some construction had started. So I believe it's been vacant for, uh, you know, about 12 years at this point. In 2016, an application was approved by this board for a, a daycare center and an apartment. I didn't handle the application. I was here that evening and, um, you know, my assessment from the faces of the members of the board at that time was it's better than a vacant property, but no one seemed particularly thrilled with the application based upon the traffic and the other concerns.
As I recall, we didn't have an option. The daycare center, there was no choice. New Jersey law.
Is that right? Yeah, that may have been the case. Like I said, I didn't handle the application, but I, I do remember it happening. And, um, the, the property now, here we are, you know, all these years later from 2016, and the property is still vacant. Somewhat recently, Six Cousins LLC, the Salamons who are here this evening purchased the, the property. They've arrived at, but I think it's a very nice plan. It's a, you know, essentially keeping the plan with the apartment upstairs, which, um, was already approved. It runs with the land, which is why we're not here tonight on a D1 use variance. We're here tonight on some C variances with respect to the property. And they're all improvements. Everything that's being done is not only an improvement from the existing condition, but a vast improvement from what was being planned previously. The previous plans had a very modest, almost no exterior renovation plan. This is finally acknowledging this property as a nice mixed-use property. It's putting a brand-new fascia, all-new inside-out, a brand-new parking lot. It's putting on brand-new lighting, drainage. We're addressing some, uh, some issues. Currently there is parking in the front, right in the site triangle, right at the corner of Arlington and Mueller. And it's not a great situation. It's a tough spot to begin with. We've relocated those spaces to the westernmost portion on Mueller and then created a conforming 24-foot wide driveway coming in with, um, a garbage enclosure with parking, with a handicap space. And also, even though I, I don't believe the building code required this to be handicap accessible, the applicant has arrived at a plan to take off that ramp that to me doesn't look like it would even work based on the pitch of the ramp, remove that ramp and put in a, a very safe lift that would be put in there. And as the planner pointed out, that does create another variance on the side yard for that. So we're going to talk about all the improvements. Tonight with us, we have the architect who's going to speak about the elevations and the floor plans, Michael Kabida. And the site engineer is going to speak about the engineering concerns as well as answer the questions of the board and the board engineer, Joseph Minecki. Uh, we also have the Salamons with us and John Lynch, um, from ownership as well. So I'd like to introduce our first witness, Michael Kabida.
Kabida, why don't I swear you in while we're sitting up? You swear from the testimony you're about to give before this board is going to be the truth of the whole truth.
I do.
Please tell us your name and swear.
Michael Kabida, K-U-Y-B-I-D-A, architect.
Kabida, I know you've been before this board many times, but if you would, give me the benefit of your professional educational experience.
As I said, I've been before this board before. I've been in private practice since 1980, a member of American Institute of Architects before many boards in Say County, Essex, and numerous southern, you know, he's been accepted as an expert witness in architecture.
Okay, Mr. Kabida is offered as an expert in the area of architecture.
License is current?
Mr. Kabida, license is current?
Yes, it is.
Hello, Michael. Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Mr. Chairman. Okay, Mike, if you would, uh, you know, give a brief overview of the, of the exterior elevation plans as well as what's being planned for the, for on the inside. Yes.
Excuse me, what you have before you? The drawing that was submitted with the application and if you fix the elevations and the floor planner to propose building. On the bottom of the drawing are the floor plans of, uh, the footprint of the building is not being changed, it's exactly the same-sized building. I'll go to the second floor, which was a one-bedroom existing apartment. It's being maintained as an apartment. The only revisions to the actual floor plan is that there was a center-set of stairs linking the two floors together. We're removing the stairs in the center, uh, closing up the floor and making the repairs and then utilize the stairs that are on the eastern side of the building as the entrance to the apartment by itself. On the first floor, uh, the floor plan was duplicated of the second floor, which we're removing partitions and creating an office environment. At the front of the building, on either side are two offices with a central entry. At the, the right rear, uh, left rear rather, it'd be a little conference room. The right portion in the center is, uh, be a general office, which also has a door to the exterior, which is where we're providing the handicap lift. At the rear portion of the building is a one-story present. And what we're doing is raising up the floor to make it all one level. And we're going to be creating the handicap, um, bathroom there. At the top of the sheet is the exterior elevations. Right now, it's a, the building looks like a residential building with dormers in the back. What we're doing is creating a new fascia on it. So we're going to be furring it out and put, you know, a stuck-off finish on it and make it created to look more like an office building. What you see here is we, is, um, it appears to be a level roof, which it is not. It's basically parapet walls to give it a, a look of a professional office building. The existing roof is pitched front to back, which will remain that way, which would accommodate the drainage that's shown on the site plan. So that, um, on the front elevation, which is in the north, we're, uh, removing the existing door and creating a new entrance with windows. It would be storefront design, which you see in commercial office building, uh, many other buildings. Uh, the front steps presently come forward towards Mueller. We're revising that to turn to accommodate the site plan and the proposed parking revisions. The rear, same thing, um, the dormer width is being maintained. We're removing the windows, replacing with new windows to give it more of the commercial look. On either side, what looks like striped vertical lines is actually a new roof. Presently, you have a half-sloped shingle roof. We're proposing is a metal standing seam roof and then.
I think of the planner of the.
Yeah. This is a metal roof on either side of the existing dormers. Um, on the left side is the, is shown as the door and we're putting in a handicap lift. Which is self-contained, it's, it's a model that's, uh, utilized in exterior applications in many places. On the right side, on the rear elevation, is a set of stairs. Presently, the existing stairs that were there have been removed. Uh, we're replacing with new stairs. Uh, the left, west and east elevations show the partial slope roof of the building. The rest of it is the fascia, which is a parapet wall. And you're going to go from the street, it would appear to be a level roof. But in essence, it's not the existing sloping roof is going to remain to accommodate the drainage and front to back, which is, they picked it on the silver drawings.
And the color proposed are just a neutral.
Yes, we'd probably put in a white gray with some white trim and then, uh, commercial-looking windows and.
Do you prefer a flat roof as opposed to a sloping roof?
Pardon?
Do you, do you prefer a flat roof over a sloping roof for drainage?
Well, the existing roof's sloped, which is maintained, rather than just a level roof. This way it facilitated drainage. We have to build some crickets against this parapet wall with the, for the roof drains. But this way it sheds the water off and we don't have any water, just going to be laying up there.
Thank you. Any questions to the board?
Chairman, I have a question. So the apartment upstairs does not have direct access to this office space that you're building on the first floor?
Correct.
Yes, there's a private staircase.
The private staircase has its own separate entrance.
The lift is an exterior?
Pardon?
That lift is, is this on?
Mine is.
The lift is an exterior outside?
Yes. If you look at the floor plan, uh, on the first floor in the back corner.
I guess my question is, is it going to rust?
Oh, they're made to be, to be installed on the exterior.
Okay.
This is a, a company that makes exterior ADA lifts.
Very well.
Um, you said, oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
Um, so you said that you're retaining the existing pitch roof and just having a parapet wall to give that, uh, look of a, um, like a flat roof?
Correct.
Correct. What's the color of the metals, uh, metal roof? Where you said the building colors would be gray and white lines. How about the color for the metal roof? What color would that be?
Metal roof would be a dark roof, like a charcoal.
Are we going to address the engineer's report with?
We have an engineer this evening and then, uh, yes, you might have to address all of the engineers.
Okay, then I reserve, uh, comments from the public until after the engineer speaks.
Thank you.
One more question. So essentially the, the dwelling is split at the rear half of the dwelling or the building is going to drain towards the rear and the front half is going to drain towards the.
Correct.
And we'll put on testimony about the perspective of the drivers. Okay, thank you, Mr. Kabida.
Thank you.
Our next witness is Joe, Joseph Minecki.
Who prepared the engineering plans and will be testifying in the area of civil engineering.
Joe, will you get your sworn in?
Yep.
Minecki, please raise your right hand, you swear or from the testimony that you're about to give before this board is going to be the truth of the whole truth.
Yes, well.
For the record, you still have your name.
Uh, Joseph S. Minecki Jr., M-I-A-N-E-C-K-I, uh, 9 Midville Avenue, Toowoa, New Jersey.
Joe, if you would, give the more than benefit of your experience.
Uh, sure. I graduated from New Jersey Institute of Technology. Sure, I graduated from New Jersey Institute of Technology in October nineteen ninety. Four years thereafter, I started my necky consulting engineers when I received my professional engineering license. My firm specializes in residential, commercial, industrial development. Flood plane, flood hazard area permitting, wetland permitting of that type, anything that pertains basically to environmental permitting or residential, commercial, industrial properties. Yes.
You offer Mr. Meinke as a expert in the area of engineering?
Thank you. You're accepted. Thank you.
Okay, Joe, it's been a lot of time on these plans. I'll give the board the overview and then we'll make sure that we answer all the questions of the board members as well.
As you said, we did spend quite a bit of time coming up with this final layout. We had the existing single family dwelling. Right here, the existing driveway that serves that dwelling is located. Right at the corner, that's going to be removed, replaced with lawn. And we're going to construct the two, two stall driveway further to the, I guess that would be the west over here. For their residential apartments. So those two parking spaces will serve solely the residential second floor apartment. Here we also created a new driveway and curb, curb cut and parking lot on the south side of the building here with a new curb cut on Arlington Street. The twenty four foot wide curb cut with thirty feet out the road. We're proposing a four, total of four star stalls, including one ADA space. Here, here, you have ADA space, eight foot wide, we need the aisle, there is van accessible.
What you're speaking about the ADA space, a comment came up from Mr. Popolares, we can address it now with respect to the size of that.
Eleven foot and then five foot, essentially the same sixteen foot total, but striking would be different.
Not, not a problem. Yes, not a problem. We also have an additional space next to the door. And you know, side from here, property stall number four. We have all new sidewalks all the way around the residential spaces, have a sidewalk on the entire front, which will go to a new covered porch, a new porch uncovered. Being reconstructed, reconfigured, pretty much the same as having a set of stairs coming down to the left where where now they come straight out. We'll have a sidewalk wrapping all the way around to give the ability to get the refuge enclosure for reference collection. And then we have all new steps and stoops proposed. We also have, as I said, a refuge area located in the main parking lot right here, just to the south of the building. There. And we also have an ADA wheelchair lift proposed. There really was no way to get a ramp into this building without having the, as you see, the existing ramp that started dealing all the way south and across the back. I don't know why they particularly came up with that configuration, but it was unacceptable for this use. So we came up with a wheelchair lift right here in the corner. So the ADA spot would be right here. Then come across the parking lot to an ADA accessible ramp onto a sidewalk to the to the lift. And then there's an existing door here where the ADA, where the wheelchair lift is, that will allow access into the building. All first floor will be office, the second floor again will be one bedroom apart. Is there any questions on that sheet?
The concrete, or not even concrete, mentioning enclosure and, you know, one of the issues that I found not so much here, but another challenge is that the E P will not permit a concrete enclosure, but would permit fencing around the garbage enclosure.
The concrete enclosure, yeah, would be considered a structure. And then we would have to go for a flood hazard area permit for this project. I'm trying to keep the applicant's project as not subject to a formal application, because basically all the improvements comply with various permits by rule. So I can provide a permit by rule now, since the board engineer may be, but I'm trying to avoid a flood hazard area.
But the concrete would be, could be an issue for impervious, but also be an issue to be considered.
Yeah. What kinds of fence are you going to build along the property line?
I believe they're going to use a PVC, a white PVC.
I'm sorry.
A white PVC fence.
Really can't hear you. Can you step a little closer?
A white PVC fence?
How high?
I believe four foot.
Alright, the recommendation is six foot and board on board. Have you talked about that at all?
After the applicant just said that, David.
He did.
I think that was mentioned before.
Yeah, okay, yeah, we'd like to report your, all brand new, take out all that, you know, chain link fencing, most of the damage and place to always board on board six foot.
Thank you. Be a definite improvement.
So we're going wood board on board, six foot high for the refuse enclosure also.
Correct.
Sorry, for the refuse enclosure also.
We're not insisting on that, John. What do you think?
Yeah, I think that would make sense that they look that there is a safe looking field for those.
That'd be great. Okay.
The, the fence itself, is it, you said surrounding the property, it's a corner lot, correct?
Yes.
The fence is not going to have any issues with sightline? Anybody coming around that corner?
No.
Will not come to that particular corner, correct?
No, because the, the fence.
Can you change start right here to number of feet?
Yeah, decent closure.
Is that three feet in from the street?
Three feet.
I'm asking, what's the distance from the street to the fence? Or anything you can approximate there?
About eight, eight feet from the curb line.
The question is sightline. We want to make sure there's.
Yeah, I understand. But given the mayor speaking of, there, there's no fencing proposed on that site.
Absolutely none.
The fencing is proposed in the rear and I don't know, is there a little?
No, there's no fence. No, no.
So there's no fencing on all the.
There's no sightline issue.
The fence will be totally property line and then portion of the western property line. And then there'll be fencing around refuse enclosure. And then there'll be gates on the front of the refuse enclosure.
You're going to replace the curbing?
Yes. We're going to replace the curbing. There's also mention in the engineer's report about the ADA. And then Mueller. I believe we're going to be replacing that. Is that correct or no?
Doesn't leave anything, but if we're to like us to do that for some future access, then that's.
Basically, of course.
Can we request Belgium blocks? Curbing?
I think that depends on what curbing exists. I don't think it's Belgium block.
No, since we're proposing concrete and that's what the road is.
So we'd have the only.
Chairman, I believe our ordinance requires all curb modifications to be changed to Belgium block.
I'm sorry.
I believe our ordinance requires all new curbs to be changed to Belgium block.
Yeah.
Is that a bad?
That's correct. I was just going to say that.
Yeah, and the proposal for thirty three gate or bump in that portion of Muller was also.
Very good. Excellent. Okay, thank you.
So just to, just to revisit the issue of the ramp, is that something that the board engineer, the board wants us to do or? Just show where that would actually work, where that's going. Right, right, and in setting around the. So on that.
There's an existing one there, but it's not compliant. On the grading drainage and utility plan, pretty much straightforward. We are increasing impervious cover, trying to do the best we can to mitigate that impervious cover. And the way we're going to mitigate it as best we can is by installation of two dry wells. One dry well system. And we can't hear you.
Can you, them going up and carry it?
Um, yes, that's better. We are have a slight increase in impervious coverage. To mitigate that impervious coverage increase, we're going to put two dry well systems in. The house is split front to back, so we're going to put a dry well system in just off the southerly corner of the building, front corner, front easterly corner. That'll take the front half of the building. And then there'll be another one underneath the parking lot to the south of the existing building. Now I'll take the rear half of the building. That's really it for that plan. All the existing utilities are going to remain the same. No change in a water service, the gas lines. We are going to abandon an existing, because there was a daycare approved there at one point. They ran a fire line into the building, a four inch fire line. We're going to be abandoning that fire line. That's over in this corner right here. So it'll just be a domestic water service, a domestic sanitary service and the gas.
Now, with respect to the size of the parking spaces, the parking spaces are nine by eighteen. It was called out in the year report that it would be by eighteen.
They're all nine by eighteen with the exception of the ADA, the ADA spot.
And then with respect to, there was a recommendation, the southwest corner, see if you can fit another parking space there. I know the backup is probably in that area. Configuration of the lot, and that was an area that was planned for some open space and for
Correct.
We believe this is.
Thank you. With regard to the parking spaces, there is an area just to the west of the striped area for the ADA spot that I do not have indicated as a stall. There was mentioned that we could make it an additional stall. The only problem is we only have a sixteen foot wide backup aisle, so it really wouldn't function as a a, a formal parking stall. So I thought about eliminating, create an open space, but then we need a place for snow removal. So that's the place we're going to, that's why I have that area there. So there really is no other opportunity to pick up any more parking. And I'll go very briefly to the landscaping lighting plan. All of the, the light, the, the rear of the building is going to be lit off a wall mounted fixture. Off the back corner of the building, you know, that'll illuminate the back. There's also one on the side of the building facing Arlington Street, Arlington Street. So that'll also illuminate that side area. And then there's another one proposed on the front of the building facing Mueller Place, which will illuminate the parking area in front of the building. So the, the site is very well lit to basically a minimum of a half a foot candle, which is acceptable for use like this. Landscaping is very small shrub types landscaping in, in the, in and around the, the front of the building facing both Arlington Street and and Mueller Place.
And the, the planner has also called out a couple of additional variances. One is for parking in the front yard setback. That is a preexisting condition, even though we're moving it, we're making an improvement. So currently there are two parking spaces that are located right at the corner of Arlington and Mueller. So we're suggesting moving those west. And then there's also another, you know, parking setback variance, I believe for five feet. And additionally, it's called out a variance for the handicap lift, which is considered a structure and now is within four feet of the side.
Correct.
Okay, I have no further questions, Mr. Man.
Any questions with the board?
Chairman, Mr. Reddy, can we talk about, yeah, there's going to be textured stone, stucco finish. Can you elaborate what that is?
That would be the.
Yeah. Can elaborate on it. It's similar to the, the top portion of Palazon. That would be like a similar that, that stucco finish. Here's this painted like a light green color and this suggested to be like gray color with trim around the windows and a, you know, contrasting.
Good. The stucco finish is, is a cement plastic finish. It's on a having an acrylic finish, that's a permanent color. It's maintenance free. The base of it is going to be the wire lat and cement plaster over a scratch coat, which is mechanically fastened to the existing building.
Yeah, we're, we're just not really fans of stucco.
This is not, I mean, a lot of people think of stucco when they talk about that drive it system on the foam board. This is not the case. This is.
It's actually real stucco. This is not what they call EFS. It's not a, it's not a system.
It's not the system that, that a lot of people associate. This is the old fashioned method, taking cement plaster, wire lat, apply it. And previously they used to paint it where you leave it as a cement color or texture. What we do is take the permanent acrylic top coat on it and it's applied and then becomes maintenance free and it maintains its color. So it's, it's different than the EFS system that most people relate to.
Do you have a comment?
The comment is that, you know, there's an effort to make this not look like a nineteen fifty nine Cape Cod. And I think like, you know, the parapet and creating the new attractive windows and we're going to put some very nice lighting in, brand new landscaping. It's going to have the appearance of, of a nice, you know, mixed use professional building and I know the applicant and they maintain their buildings and.
Would you any more landscaping? I think the exact word, a very small shrub.
For the landscaping, yeah, you know, we can, there's additional landscaping.
As much green, as much, I know there's not much area, but as much green as we can do.
Yep, we can work with the board engineer to, to make some enhancements to the landscaping, sure.
In fact, it doesn't indicate it on the drawing, but it looks like a tree is going to be removed.
Yes, that would have to be removed, yes.
Yeah. I would like to see that replaced with a, you know, another deciduous tree. That will help absorb some of the rainwater in the area.
Okay, there, there, there is a dry well proposed in that. I mean, we can, we can put one in the, in the back over here. I, I can work with the engineer and the planner on that. I don't, I don't have a problem with that.
How many trees are going to be removed?
Uh, one.
One tree.
Yeah, one, yes. I, I think there's some scrub type vegetation located in the stall number six, I'll call that area too. So there might be something in there being removed. There's one, I'll call it a larger tree that needs to be removed.
Admittedly, most of the surrounding area is macadam blacktop cement. We understand that, but as much green as we could get, we would appreciate.
ample room here to plant, you know, we could plant two trees on this, you know, take one down and plant two in its place.
The tree is going to go to accommodate two cars parking in the front yard?
Excuse, excuse me?
The tree will be removed so that you can accommodate parking in the front yard?
Uh, no, the tree is going to be removed to accommodate the dry well. It's being, I have to put a dry well for infiltration. I can't shift the dry well over because all the utilities are in, are in, and directly in front of the building.
Dry well going back.
There's a gas line. There's a gas line right here, so I can't shift it over.
You could see a picture of the tree in.
I'm looking.
Lander's figure three.
Yes.
There, there is room to put a, a tree. Like, I don't want to say directly in the front of the building, but we could put a tree here, or we could even stick the tree back over in this area right here. Are you looking for a street tree or are you just looking for a tree?
John, that, the tree I was referring to is the tree that's indicated in figure three. And to me, that looks like it's, it's going to be replaced by the parking, two parking spaces.
It does to me as well.
Yes.
Yeah. I agree. Yeah, but there is, there's ample room on the other side. I think we wouldn't want it right from the site triangle, but there's ample room to the trees. We can work with the engineer.
I'm sorry, there's ample room to plant two trees?
Take the one down and plant two new trees.
Deciduous?
Yes.
Large?
Yeah.
I don't want anybody to misunderstand what I'm saying here. Okay.
As the mayor notes, I'm a big pro.
We do know, we know, you know, but you're working professionally now.
Yeah, no, that's fine. That's reasonable. And I think that would make this look very nice.
Okay, we're with the engineer. Any questions with the board for the engineer? Do you have any other professionals?
No.
All right, at this point, I'll ask for a motion to open up the meeting to the public.
Chairman, I have a question still. Mr. Reddy, when you come back to this board to put up a sign, we're on this, where would you put up a sign?
I think it would probably be on the building. We're not proposing anything that would require a variance and, you know, very small. Very small professional office that's being proposed, like, you know. No, it would just be, you know, on the building, you know, just a discreet sign in accordance with the current sign.
Thank you.
How many, how many people will be working in this office at any given time?
It's hard to say, as we, we saw the comment of the planner, because there is not currently a tenant there, but it's. It's not a very large office, there's, there's only two offices there in a conference room.
We talking three or four people?
I think even less than that, but yeah.
Mr. Salomo, three or four people? Oh, I thought I didn't, I didn't.
Professional office, so we're not sure, but yeah, they're, they're not very large offices, there are two of them and a conference room and a waiting area.
Very good.
If we do approve it as a office space, I'm opposed for this abandoned use of the daycare center?
I mean, that's a great question, we're, we're definitely willing to do that, no interest in putting a daycare center here. But that is a good legal question, technically it's approved, it was a. Runs with the land, but this, the board has the, you know, has it within their right to put that in. Yeah, I mean, it's really, it never, not even abandoned, then it was never done, it was approved. They never, to my knowledge, they never extended the approvals, but, you know, I would say, why not just put it in this resolution? That it's in a, in abundance of caution that that daycare use is now prohibited.
Any additional questions to the board? Do you have a motion to open up the meetings to the public? May I have a second?
Second.
We have a question? All those in favor, I. You can approach.
You swear from the testimony you're about to give before the court, it's going to be the truth.
Yes.
Tell us your name, spell your last name and give us your.
Anthony Nikozia, N-I-C-O-S-I-A. Seven Holiday Drive, West Baldwin. I just had a question, I just wanted to look at this, I'm actually, I own the property next door at eleven.
You appeared, you appeared at the original meeting.
I did not, no.
You said not.
Yeah, so I don't, like I said, I just wanted to just make sure as far as just where the fencing was going and. I guess where that handicap thing was going, because my parking lot goes to that, that's the only question I had.
Yeah, Joe wants to show on the map exactly where they do. Yeah, no, no, that's okay, I know exactly, your building is right.
Yes.
Thank you.
Any further, you know, when else, coming forward, I posed the meeting to the public. I'd like to ask our planner. It's Shavon, do you have any questions, comments?
Uh, no, I just, the only thing I wanted to ask is, so you don't know how many. People will be coming to the office, but you think the four, five spaces would be adequate?
We do, yeah, based upon its, you know, small office, we preserve two spaces for the apartment upstairs, it's a one-bedroom apartment. And the balance of the parking for the professional office, I did see your note in there that technically based on the coverings that it's. The requirement or the request would be a variance, we thought it was seven spaces. You're calling it out as eight based upon the computation of the square footage. And.
And also the way the ordinance reads.
Yes.
If we were to go by what you said, you as in your app for the engineer said, it's five point two, so it.
So we round it up. So, so with that said, the variance would be, whereas eight spaces are required under the code, we're providing six, and we do believe that it's more than.
Um, have you any?
I have a question, Mr. Reddy.
See sense.
So there's five C variances, is your.
Yes.
I'm, I'm just refusing our planner's report. Of each board.
Yeah, minimum side yard, correct, minimum number of parking spaces as we addressed, as we just spoke to, so eight, whereas six is being proposed. Parking setback of five feet, where we have less than five feet. Parking lot location in the front yard, it's a pre-existing condition, but albeit it's being moved, I, we think to a better location. And parking stall size of nine by eighteen, whereas ten by twenty is required.
You need one for the eight by eighteen?
Uh, no, there's no eight by eighteen, there was an eight by eighteen for the portion of the handicap accessible spot, but. We agreed to change that to the standard required by Mr. Coles.
Thank you.
John, on the, I'm sorry.
So are you proceeding under C one or C three?
So, I, I think really, there's arguments for both, I think, based upon, this is, you know, this lot was built as a single-family home. There, there are others, I think now there's maybe only one left on Muller, and it's really, that whole area is turning into a nice little commercial area. You know, remember the house that was there behind Palazon was in terrible disrepair, there's only one of those left on Muller, and I think this is right at the corner. And so I think there's a lot of them focused on the C two, and there's a lot of positive criteria here. And, and I look to just two prongs, one being the general welfare and safety of how this is being proposed. Will now actually have handicap accessibility, the ramp was never ADA compliant, it never adequately worked, this is now ADA. Compliant, and there's definitely a more desirable visual impact. You know, talk about specific design, having this mixed-use building in this area and making all of the improvements. To make it look like a professional office building and not a home that's been attempted to be converted. You know, for all those reasons, I think that we meet the positive criteria. And I don't see any negative criteria, this application, we're creating more parking than was there in the two thousand, certainly more than is existing, more than was proposed. In twenty sixteen, and for such a small building, the applicants really gone above and beyond to make this a, a great building and something now that is. Sustainable, never good to have a building that's been vacant for twelve years. And now this will remedy that, so I think for, for all those reasons, the board should feel very comfortable showing that this is a substantial benefit. Not only to the area, but to the zone plan and has no negative impact whatsoever.
Are you wrapped up?
Unless there are other questions, I think that is, that is a wrap, and it's almost not even eight o'clock.
Uh, but you can't beat the six-minute meeting last.
No.
Anyway, very good, any questions to the board?
My only comment would be that, in my opinion, having this use in that location. Beats the use of the currently approved daycare center, which I think may. May cause a logistical nightmare in those very small side streets, in my opinion. This is a much better improvement and better use for that location than a daycare would ever be in that location, which is currently approved.
Agree.
That's just one comment that I would add.
We have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Please poll the board.
Mr. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Karage? Mr. Luke D'Amiano?
Yes.
Ms. Cataldo?
Yes.
Mayor D'Amiano?
Yes.
Councilman Scova?
Yes.
Mr. Seber?
Yes.
Dr. Raffi? Mr. Kilpatrick?
Chairman votes yes, the application is approved.
Thank you, everyone, all the best, a very happy holiday, we'll see you at the January meeting.
Any old business?
From the saddle holes to you guys, Mary.
Thank you. And thank you for the cement truck, wow, you do that personally. Thank you. Any old business, any new business, no bills, may I have a motion for a term? Before I get a second, happy Christmas, happy holidays to everyone, thank you for a wonderful year. Can I have a second?